We want to call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. Chase.
Present.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. McCosker.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Would you please stand for the color guard presentation from Stafford High School's Navy JROTC.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'd like to thank Cadets Trembley, Martinette, C. Reed, and Z. Reed for being with us this evening from Stafford High School's Navy JROTC. And the instructors of this JROTC program are Lieutenant Commander Felix Martinez and Senior Chief Sky Shaw. Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
If we have a motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to awards and recognitions. First, we'd like to recognize Mr. Barry Suddeth. Mr. Suddeth, I don't know if we want to give him your title or not. Mr. Suddeth is the very capable head of our Transportation Department.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board, and Dr. Kizner. I'm honored to be here tonight to introduce you to two of our bus drivers who go above and beyond every day, but really went above and beyond earlier this winter. Mister, we were on a two-hour delay, and Mr. James Vinson saw two students, a kindergartner and a fifth grader, walking along Lay Hill Road as he was going for his high school run. Those of you who know Lay Hill Road know that that is not a road that children should be walking on. So, Mr. Vinson stopped, picked the children up, contacted dispatch, and we made sure dispatch between Mr. Vinson and dispatch and a couple of other drivers, we got those students where they needed to be. So, on another morning, and this was a pre-dawn morning, Mr. Philip Carter was driving his high school route in Aquia Harbor, and it was dark. And he found probably a three-year-old child running down one of the roads. Mr. Carter stopped, picked the child up, brought him onto the school bus, and waited for the proper authorities to arrive. And it's scary to think, if you watch the video on the bus, you just see a movement out there in the light, and Mr. Carter and Mr. Vinson both protected children in our county. And I'm real proud of them. The whole department is proud of them, and I wanted them to come here tonight for you all. Mr. Vinson?
Dr. Kizner. Dr. Kizner, we want you in the picture. Dr. Kizner never misses an opportunity for a photo.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate your contributions every single day. Next, we'd like to recognize Ms. Kathy Massey, the Director of the Head Start Program, for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. Thank you again for feeding us our families last night. That was wonderful. It is my pleasure to recognize Matt Warren and Mark Doyle, two of our wonderful firefighters and their team, with an award of appreciation for helping to provide backpacks and warm coats. We're constantly amazed by the incredible work that they do for the community and how they go above and beyond to provide school supplies, backpacks, and warm coats for over a hundred of our friends at Head Start. We can't thank you enough for everything that you do, and knowing that there is support and dedication like what you have invested makes us all better people, both at work and at home. With pride in our spirits, we want you to know that you are appreciated and recognized for all you do. Please come forward when I call your name, Matt Warren and Mark Doyle. Please, please join me in congratulating these firefighters and their support of Head Start. And I think your fellow firefighter is working tonight, right?
Mr. Joseph Lewis, Principal at Stafford High School, is next for presentation of awards.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Board members, and Dr. Kizner. Would Jennifer Harada please come forward? It is my pleasure to recognize Jennifer Harada, who, on February 22nd, won the VHSL Class V Indoor Track and Field State Championship in the girls' pole vault with a state meet record height of 13 feet, 5 inches.
Whoa.
Jennifer also holds the indoor track and field state records for girls' pole vault with a height of 13'6". She is a two-time state outdoor track and field champion and a two-time state indoor track and field champion, and we have one more outdoor season to go. Please join me in congratulating Jennifer Harada. Next, I'd like to recognize the Stafford High School Theater Department. They had a very successful festival competition season this year. The production of Alice in Wonderland has been honored with numerous awards at the sectional, regional, and state levels. Audience, please hold your applause until the end. Thank you. The production is led by Director Michael Daddario and co-director Chad Johnson. The cast includes Ryan Anderson, Austin Cox, Ryan Humphrey, Javon Long, Ava Milanthy, Kaitlin Pates. The assistant director is Ally Yablonsky. The stage managers are Brittany Groupie, Sarah Putka, and the sound designer is Thomas Newsom. The stage crew includes Tameya Barnes, Nathan Davis, Lauren Dent, Mira Dover, Kaylee Feint, Hope Fuller, Taylor Goan, Emily Hamlet, Azende Johnson, Jenna Johnson, Hayden Kendall, Austin Moore, Malcolm Paharis, Max Redman, Dylan Schindel, Cameron Smith, and Nico Toro. The team won the following awards this season. The Virginia Theater Association High School Theater Festival Honorable Mention Production All-State Cast Ryan Anderson, All-State Cast Ava Milanthy, Technical Merit Award Honorable Mention Costume Merit Award. The VHSL 5D2 Sectional Theater Festival First Placed Best Play Outstanding Actor Ryan Anderson, Outstanding Actor Austin Cox, Outstanding Actor Ava Milanthy. VHSL 5D Regional Theater Festival First Place Best Play Outstanding Actor Ryan Anderson, Outstanding Actor Ava Milanthy. VHSL Five, Class V State Theater Festival First Place Best Play Outstanding Actor Ryan Anderson, Outstanding Cox, Outstanding Hector. Austin Cox. Almost made it through. Please join me in congratulating Stafford High School Theater Department on an amazing achievement. Thank you for your time and support of our program.
The Theater Department has something to give each of the board members and Dr. Kizner.
Oh, kind of performance. Oh, no. An invite. Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Peter and the... Oh, yeah. And then you knew exactly who we were.
Thank you for the invitations.
That's right. Thank you for the invitations, guys, gals.
There's room. Lots of room now.
All right, Mr. Horneck, your turn. Principal, North Stafford High School, for presentation of awards. North Nation.
North Nation is in the house. Good evening, Madam Chair, esteemed board members. Dr. Kizner, it's a pleasure this evening. Indulge us. We have 13 of the best of the best to present to you. I'd like to start with Mr. Swinton, Javon Swinton. North Stafford is proud to recognize the on-court accomplishments of Javon Swinton. He is currently a junior, and he's already a two-time All-District, All-Region, and All-State basketball player, named the Commonwealth District Player of the Year in 2018 and 2019, Region Five Player of the Year 2019, and recently recognized by the Freelance Star as a first-team All-Area Player and the 2019 Player of the Year. And this year, he eclipsed the 1,000-point mark and has numerous offers in both sports. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Javon Swinton.
Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute. We've got some more people to get their picture with you. Please.
I told him that.
Next, we would like to recognize Ms. Christina Bappel. So if Christina would come down. Christina is an absolutely phenomenal young lady and one of the best gymnasts we have ever seen come through, North Nation. She is a previous state champion. She was named the 2019 All-Around Region Champion, placed third in the floor routine, fourth in the vault at the Virginia State Tournament. But the, in addition to these accomplishments, the highest praise came from her coach, who talked about her leadership and how she mentored many of our young folks and young ladies on the team. She's an inspiration. We're incredibly proud of her. She's quiet and goes about her business, but she is phenomenal. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Christina Bappel. Next, we would like to have Mr. Nick Moxley. Amazing achievement. We are talking about a young man who is going to be famous, there's no doubt about it. This past summer, he represented Stafford in the Summer Residential Governor's School for the Visual and Performing Arts, received an Outstanding Performance Award at the Region Theater Festival, also one of two folks to get an Outstanding Best Actor Award at the Super Regional Theater Festival. We are incredibly proud of him and all of his efforts. Again, an impressive leader and young man that makes North Nation great. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Nick Moxley. Yes. This is incredibly impressive. Little bit of background, we'd like to bring Gabriel Gilbert down. 1994, former U.S. Senator Harry Byrd established his Leadership Award Program because he had a deep conviction of the importance of a strong system of public education and how it's essential to continuing a democratic government. And he also believed that cultivating leadership among young citizens advances everybody. So, we, there is an award winner each year, one from each of the 11 congressional districts in Virginia that received $10,000, and of course, the amazing recognition that goes with it. We would like to present to you Mr. Gabriel Gilbert, who is our own recipient of the Harry F. Byrd Leadership Award. He has now been inducted into a much esteemed group of individuals, few we have ever seen come through our area. On a side note, this is North Nation's second year in a row with a young lady receiving it last year. Please join me in congratulating Gabriel Gilbert on this amazing accomplishment. At this time, I would like to have Sarah Schaefer and Samuel Lightfoot, please come down. National Merit Scholarship Program is an academic competition and recognition of scholarship that began in 1955. High school students enter it by taking the PSAT and MSQT, sorry about all the acronyms, test which serves as initial screening for approximately 1.6 million entrants each year, and of course, by meeting the published program entry and participation requirements. In order to be considered a finalist, students must remain in high academic standing, be endorsed by the principal, which this was a no-brainer, have stellar SAT scores, and exude the strongest combination of academic skills, achievements, extracurricular accomplishments, and potential for success. A school principal, when you have one, is amazing, finalist. When you have two, there's not much more that we have to say. Absolutely amazing. It's a testament to these two young folks here in front of you tonight. Please congratulate Sarah Schaefer and Samuel Lightfoot. Could I have Mrs. Victoria Barrett, please? We'd like to congratulate Ms. Victoria Barrett, who will be the most accomplished volleyball player in the history of our school. I say will be, just because she is only a junior. Back-to-back Player of the Year in the region and in the Commonwealth District, named to the All-State Team the past two seasons, also named the Freelance Star All-Area Player of the Year the past two seasons, performs incredibly well in the classroom, is a positive leader, mentor, and role model for her peers. The sky is the limit, and if you've seen the pictures of her in the paper, literally the way she jumps, the sky is the limit. Please join me in congratulating this Victoria Barrett. Could I have Mr. Giuseppe and Sarah, please? Most decorated wrestler in the history of our school. Four-time All-District wrestler, three-time All-Region wrestler, both school records, named to the All-State Wrestling Team three times, the 2019 State Champion in the 152 weight class. Additionally, Giuseppe broke the school wins record in the last match, so he won the state tournament, and with that became the record holder in wins for North Stafford. He eclipsed the coveted 100 career pin milestone, and so he is the North Stafford record holder in wins and pins. Please join me in congratulating this amazing young man. And if I could have, Mr. Devon Ford. May have heard about this young man. Most accomplished football player in the history of North Stafford. The statistics are staggering. 7,000 yards of total offense, 103 touchdowns in his high school career, recipient of All-District, All-Area, All-Region, All-State, All-World, All-Universe. Region and State Player of the Year the past season. All, while not missing a day of school leading up to this year, maintaining 3.8 grade point average. And his most recent accolade is DMV District Maryland-Virginia Player of the Year recently. He's been asked to do a speaking engagement, too, so he's working on his speech in his oral communication class. Please join me in recognizing Mr. Devon Ford. And last but not least, could I please have Chi Sam, Fatma Doolanda, and Geraldine, please come down? Board members, as you likely know, we are proud to recognize these four beautiful and amazing ladies for taking the lead with Mr. Odlum, who is a business teacher at North Stafford and also teaches our leadership class, so I'd like for Mr. Odlum to please join us. These four young ladies had a vision last month and planned and carried out an amazing Black History Month celebration and expo at North Stafford. This brought significant press to the school, but most importantly, it helped solidify our Renaissance values of respecting, recognizing, rewarding, and reinforcing all students. The expo and celebration was absolutely the most popular first-time event I can ever remember happening. We've received so much positive feedback that literally at the event, we were pretty, the fans clamored for us to make this a yearly event, so this is now going to become a tradition at North Stafford. We are incredibly proud to present Chi Sam, Anye Jekwe, Fatma Dasee, Doolanda St. Seer, and Geraldine Hitten. Please join me.
Ms., before you all go, I see a proud parent, I believe, out back here, trying to get a sideways picture, so why don't you come on up front and get your own? More than one. You can go photobomb it, Dr. Kizner, if you want. All right, thank you. Thank you. Wow.
Thank you for indulging us.
Thank you, Mr. Horneck. Well, that brings us to the end of the awards.
Thank you. Incredibly proud. Thank you, guys.
Thank you all for joining us tonight, and congratulations. All right, now we come to a proclamation for School Library Month. Dr. Chase.
Whereas school library programs ensure that students and staff are effective users of ideas and information, and whereas a school librarian's role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the library program is an integral part of the instructional program of the school, and whereas the school board has entrusted the school librarian in each school to teach the skills of locating and using information to provide literature appreciation activities and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading to every student, and whereas school library programs contribute to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in education, and whereas the school librarians of Stafford County have dedicated themselves to work for quality library programs for all students, and now, therefore be it proclaimed that April 2019 is School Library Month in all of the public schools of Stafford County. The school board encourages school administrators, teachers, and citizens to recognize and support this action and to participate throughout the month of April in the celebration of School Library Month. Thank you, you guys.
If there's any librarians with us, would you please stand up so we can recognize you? And we also thank you for the candy.
And for always looking after us with these little treats every year, so thank you.
Dr. Kizner, the board, well, me, I direct you to take care of them this month. And I'm going to leave that up to you, how you do that.
All right. That brings us to citizen comments. Yes, he signed up.
Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation by the chairwoman. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose, topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy 1113: Public Complaints.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. We have eight people that signed up, but we are going to limit public comment to not exceed one hour, because we have a full agenda this evening and we want to be able to get to our work. So... So I'm going to call the first eight names. After that, if anyone wants to address the board, you can come forward. And these first eight people have already signed up. If you are not someone who's signed up, there's going to be a sign-in sheet, which you can sign after you've addressed the board. The first speaker is Lily Tipling. The second is Angela Hensley. The third is Victoria Say Walker. And the fourth is Conrad Jones.
Hi. My name is Lily Tipling, and my address is 1 Sequoia Lane. I am a 4th grader at Conway Elementary. I come to you because I know that you dedicate your lives to the future of children in Stafford County. My heart is heavy with the knowledge that our future and the future of our planet is currently in great danger. Every year, Stafford County Public Schools discards approximately 1,920,000 single-use plastic straws. That's outrageous. While plastic straws are only a small fraction of the single-use plastic we discard, they are detrimental to our environment. Plastic straws take 200 years to decompose. Every single piece of plastic that has ever been produced still exists today. 8.8 million tons of plastic waste end up in the oceans every year, some of which gets trapped in giant toxic islands of trash in the ocean. The largest is the size of a continent. Every year, 1 million seabirds and 100,000 marine animals die from ingesting plastic waste. The seafood you're consuming may be contaminated by plastic. Gross, right? Our future depends on a greater focus on sustainability. Now enough with the environmental facts, let's talk money. Stafford County Public Schools Nutrition Department spends approximately $4,000 on straws each year. The students are extremely wasteful of straws, frequently dropping them in the hallway, using five or more at a time, blowing bubbles in their milk, etc. Our milk and juice cartons are designed to be used without straws. Straws simply aren't necessary. In our already underfunded public schools, we could easily find better things to spend this money on. Saving money and the environment? That's what my principal, Mr. Abel, would call a win-win. I implore you to please take a step towards sustainability by eliminating straws in Stafford County Public Schools. I thank you for your time. Have a great evening. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Angela Hensley. I live at 111 Channel Cove, and I'm a 20-year resident of Stafford County. I'm also a retired educator from Fairfax County Public Schools. I have two boys who went through Moncur, and their brother, who is not my son, is currently a kindergartner there. This redistricting process has been a bumpy road, and we are now down to the school board choosing between two plans with a few very important differences. I'm asking the school board to approve Plan E22 because it keeps more students in their current community schools and supports educational continuity, as well as continuity of neighborhood support and school traditions. It moves approximately 676 fewer students than Plan E21, which is a tremendous number of students who would remain at their current school and maintain educational continuity. E22 is also preferable because Moncur and Hampton Oaks will be more economically equitable with only a 10% difference in free and reduced lunch students, rather than Moncur having 31% more free and reduced lunch students than Hampton Oaks in Plan E21. Plan E22 also has a more racial balance with just a 5% difference in the minority population of the two schools, while Plan E11 creates a huge imbalance of a 36% difference in the minority populations of Hampton Oaks and Moncur. This redistricting should be about -- not about pretty maps with commercial space colored and to look good. It should be about students, about educational continuity accomplished by moving as few students as possible, and about keeping school demographics balanced. Please choose Plan E22 to keep the greatest number of students at their current schools and closer economic and racial similarity between Hampton Oaks and Moncur than in Plan E21. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Victoria Say Walker. I'm a Moncur Bear. I've been a Moncur Bear for five years and am now in the 4th grade. I'm the vice president of the Student Council Association and a student ambassador to planning the build of the new Moncur. I'd like the board to please vote for Plan E2. Plan E2 keeps most of the Moncur's current students at Moncur and affects moving less students than Plan E1. Moncur has taught me many things. Moncur is my second home and has allowed me to become who I am. My brother, too, has gone to Moncur Elementary. I want to follow his footsteps. I have learned many things from my Moncur family: kindness, responsibility, and perseverance to talk to you guys, and with many other -- and mother, many other things. I really loved working with Mr. Mackey and Ms. Martinez, and I hope I can do some more if you guys choose Plan E2. Our students, council, and ambassador have worked really hard to plan the new Moncur. I've gone to the building site and got excited about our new building next year. We worked really hard with this PTO to get a check at our new school. As a Moncur pledge goes, as a Moncur Bear, we don't like bullying at our school. It isn't nice and it isn't cool. Every school has a right to be safe and fun and bully-free. I'm respectful to others, to my school, and to myself. I'm responsible for everything I do. I am the best I can be. I am a Moncur Bear, and I am very proud of it. On behalf of my Moncur family, student council, and student ambassadors, please vote for Plan E2.
I am Conrad, and I am from 1127 Atlantic Drive. Good evening. I am Conrad Jones, and I go to Moncur Elementary. I am in the 4th grade, and I came here tonight to talk to you about my new school. I am an ambassador, also known as a tour guide. Tour guide. We are a specific group of kids that were given this assignment from Mr. Mackey. Ambassador knows the complete layout of the rebuild. We will be there in the fall to help students find their new classrooms. I can't -- I may not be there because I live in Aquia Harbor. I will be a 5th grader returning, but only if my mom drives me. My sister will have to go to a different school. I've been out at Moncur since kindergarten, and I don't want to spend my last year at a different school and without my close friends. I have built friendships with some of my teachers that would go away if I moved schools. Our student body has worked hard for three years to help the PTO raise funds to help pay for our running track and baseball courts. It would be sad to know that all the hard work was for nothing. Please take your time when voting tonight, because your vote can affect hundreds of kids like me. Thank you for your time. Go Bears!
All right. The next four speakers are Paul Wildowski, Matthew Sutton, Rachel Rulapoo -- you'll have to correct that one to get up there. Rulapa? It's close. And Wendy Desmond.
Paul Roblowski, 8 Pickens Lane in the Jerry Mandurk Rock Hill District. Four of you are up for reelection. That's if you want to. Of three, what can I say? You have 67 days to get your petition signed by 125 registered voters. Mark that down, K262019, Willz Waldo made a mistake. I don't make too many. I love the North Stafford presentation today because if I win commissioner of revenue, my salary is going to go to scholarships. I love that wrestling guy. Because on my Air Force scholarship, Oklahoma State is the wrestling Hall of Fame. And guess who I'd really like to recruit? I like that football player, too. I think we could beat OU that way. Now, you know, we're living under the 2011 Jerry Mandurk aspects, and 2021 is just around the corner. You don't realize what happens in 10 short years, but you see the redistricting problems you've had to face. The county is facing issues with anchor properties, trying to bring in Harris Theater instead of Wegmans, IQ, Legos. Amazon would be great. But what do I know? That's why I'm running for the commissioner. I don't want to be on the board of supervisors. I did learn about the Harry F. Bird Award, which really interests me. That was a nice touch, and I also learned about our theater department, which gives me some other ideas for my campaign. Now, you know, you as a board made a big mistake to the board of supervisors. They take advantage because you didn't give them the budget on time. Then you tell them that you want 5%. Then you tell them that next year you want another 5%. And I'm just going to tell you, politically, you're putting yourself under the bus. I've been doing this for 25 years, so I kind of know this. They appeased you by advertising a $1.04 tax rate, but three of them are up for reelection. Always remember, the $39 million high school that got torn down is a technical aspect. And I still say you have too many assistant principals in a county, and it's called middle management. So let's redistrict them.
Good evening, everybody. Matthew Sutton, 981 Coastal Avenue, Embry Mill. You probably already know me. In light of the pending redistricting vote, I have a request. Both remaining plans will redistrict all of Embry Mill to Park Ridge Elementary. That shift will bring a variety of change in routines and habits for our neighborhood, and especially our children at the elementary level. As a teacher of 10 years and a student of Stafford County schools, I can assure you that rhythm and routine are important to the success for any student, especially elementary-age students. There's been a pilot program in effect between Winding Creek and Park Ridge where the schools essentially share buses throughout the year. Winding Creek students start and end their day with an earlier schedule, and Park Ridge students start and end their day with a later schedule. I understand the need and see the value in the pilot program due to bus and driver shortages. I'm asking that the schedule be reversed for Winding Creek and Park Ridge starting in August of 2019 as part of this redistricting plan. Essentially have Park Ridge take the earlier shift this coming year, and Winding Creek take the later shift. Embry Mill students are well-adjusted to the routine with the earlier pickup time and drop-off time. Maintaining that schedule for our children will significantly aid in a smoother transition for their new school. The commute time for all Embry Mill students, elementary students, will be increasing by an additional 10 to 15 minutes on average, when you account for whichever route they end up taking, stop signs, and traffic. Adjusting the start and end times at Park Ridge will assist in easing the routines for those children by allowing to keep the same schedules during the 2019 and 2020 school year. Additionally, family and children's schedules for before and after-school activities will likely be able to remain the same as well. Embry Mill requested to stay together and at Winding Creek, which will not be happening based on the two remaining plans. This is a small accommodation that can easily be enacted as part of the overall redistricting effort. Bus routes will be changing. This is one additional adjustment, which will not make those route changes any more difficult to plan out. I'm asking the board and Transportation Department to please revisit the pilot program for Winding Creek and Park Ridge and adjust Park Ridge Elementary to the early start and end time for the benefit of our community and, most importantly, our children. This will be a difficult transition for them, and this one adjustment will most assuredly help smooth the way for our entire community. Specifically, Ms. Young, while I have a second, I would just ask if it's possible, under Roberts' rules, to add an amendment to both plans up for vote tonight to accommodate for this? I would like to see that amendment moved for in case there's a chance that it can be voted on tonight. If not, please, to all of you, reach out to the Transportation Board and to the elementary school principals at Park Ridge and Winding Creek and see if this one adjustment can be made. Our neighborhood got thrown under the bus with the high school split years ago. We desperately asked to be kept together at Winding Creek. It didn't happen. We got bounced. We're going to get bounced again in a few years whenever the new schools get built in Embry Mill. So I'm asking, maybe one little accommodation for our neighborhood wouldn't be too much to ask to help keep our kids transitioning well. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Rulapa. I live at 1000
Rachel, can you pull that microphone down so we can hear you better? Thank you.
My name is Rachel Rulapa. I live on Santa Maria Drive in Aquia Harbor. Hello. I am a student at Moncur Elementary, though my relationship with Moncur began several years before I was even school age, through my sisters and brothers who also attended there. Some of my first memories of my elementary school experience are of attending activities at Moncur and already getting to know some of the staff and teachers who would and could become my teachers. I have continued to appreciate those relationships since becoming a Bear myself. Over the past two years, I've been involved with the new building's designs in progress as a new Moncur building expert, and I am proud of this. It has been exciting to visit the construction site, film a video about the building's progress, ensure that information with my classmates. I am also excited to help give tours to visitors this fall. My classmates and I have trusted that our input and involvement would also mean being a part of Moncur's future. I would be very sad to lose not only this leadership experience and the opportunity to experience the final product of our plans and ideas after being a part of the design for so long already, but also all the relationships my classmates and I have made throughout Moncur. Because what's most important and special about Moncur Elementary is not the building, it's the people inside. The teachers, staff, my classmates, the parents who support us, the relationships and bonds we've created together, and the lessons learned from each other at the same time. Thank you for your time.
Hello. It's tough to follow all that cuteness. Good evening. My name is Wendy Desmond. I live at Potomac Drive. I am president of the Moncur Elementary PTO, and I am here to speak in support of Plan -- I'm just going to call them Plan One and Plan Two, if that is easier for everybody. I'm here to speak in support of Plan Two. I have a daughter at Shirley High Middle School who spent six years at Moncur, and a son who's a 1st grader there now. As the PTO president, I could talk about the plans we have for the new school, but as a parent, I feel that the new school is really just a building. The administrators, teachers, and staff are the reasons why we want to keep the children and students at their current schools, whether that is at Moncur or any other school. We all know that children will be moved in a redistricting, but they don't need to be moved unnecessarily. Plan One swaps 462 students from Hampton Oaks to Moncur and 524 from Moncur to Hampton Oaks. My daughter has academic challenges and follows an IEP. She developed attachments to the specialists and paraprofessionals that she worked with at Moncur, and I know that she would have had a difficult time if she had been redistricted in her elementary years to an entirely new environment and with teachers she was unfamiliar with. My son, on the other hand, does well academically but is extremely shy. It took him four months before he would even speak to the teaching assistant that he works with every single day in the classroom. Most children are resilient and would bounce back after being redistricted to a new school. However, some kids will have academic or social setbacks. In Plan Two, you're provided with the opportunity to allow 676 students to remain in their current schools, following their current academic path with teachers and administrators who know those children, their personalities, their needs, and their backgrounds. Plan Two incorporates both common sense and compassion. You have the capacity to ensure that 676 students' educational consistency. And by the way, that's slightly higher than the number of students who are going to be attending Hartwood Elementary in the fall. So please, when you vote tonight, I encourage you to please vote for Plan Two. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? Please come forward.
Good evening, Stafford County School Board. My name is Sean Hawkins. I live at 125 Mount Hope Church Road, Stafford, Virginia. Last week, during the redistricting school board work session, it was recommended to move Aberley Apartments to Falmouth Elementary and to move Mount Hope Church Road back to Stafford Elementary. Three of you opposed the recommendation because you did not think you could make Aberley Apartments aware of the recommendation, even though the recommendation is the fair and logical decision. I would like to remind you that there is past precedent for this, however, when the school board made this same type of last-minute decision when you redistricted the middle schools. It is never too late to make the right decision. I understand you do not want to delay the vote for another public hearing, so make the right decision now. You heard from me at the public hearing, and I assume that you have read the letters that I have emailed you and passed out to each one of you individually in person last week. I would like to reiterate why this is the fair and logical decision. Aberley Apartments is new development that is very transient. They have not been vocal about redistricting because they don't care where their kids go to school. They are not going to be there long. Mount Hope Church Road has long-term area residents who do care. Aberley Apartments is closer to Falmouth Elementary than Mount Hope Church Road is to Grafton Village Elementary. Falmouth Elementary has a lot of available capacity. Aberley APU population will rise in the coming years. Mount Hope Church Road APU population will fall in the coming years. Check your numbers to verify this is true. If you are worried about Stafford Elementary overcrowding, Mount Hope Church Road is a better choice than Aberley to leave at Stafford Elementary. Brook Road is the road that connects Mount Hope Church Road to Grafton Village Elementary. Brook Road is currently closed to traffic from Eskimo Hill Road to Deacon Road. According to Stafford County, Brook Road will not reopen until March 2020 at the soonest. Currently, the only way to get to Grafton Village Elementary is to take a long detour that goes past Conway Elementary. Forcing Mount Hope Church Road to Grafton Village Elementary during this closure is ridiculous. Two of you wanted to make this change last week. Hopefully, tonight, two more of you can see the logic and fairness of sending Aberley Apartments to Falmouth Elementary and sending Mount Hope Church Road to Stafford Elementary. If you won't move the entire Mount Hope Church Road APU to Stafford Elementary, please split the APU and move Mount Hope Church Road from the railroad tracks west. That is where all the families who have been active and vocal about this troubling issue reside. Your decision will have a huge impact on our lives. We have invested much in our community. We deserve better. We don't deserve to be displaced from Stafford Elementary when Aberley stays. Thank you.
Could you also sign in, please, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Christina Hawkins. I reside at 125 Mount Hope Church Road. I'm basically here to second everything my husband just said, and to add a couple more We would really, 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 really like to stay at Stafford Elementary School, for a lot of reasons. And, I mean, a lot of the people at Acquah Harbor are also saying where they want to stay because of relationships, and that's a big one for us as well. When you actually look at the numbers, it'd be evenly in and out if you take the Aberley Apartments out, put us in. Their border is right up on Falmouth Elementary School. We have a -- right now, there's a panhandle for Stafford. It would just be a panhandle the other way. Really, not too big of a deal. Yes, that's their third furthestaway school, but it is still 6.2 miles, and Grafton for us is 7.1. It's almost a mile difference for us to go to our second-choice school. So, for me, it's about longevity and just having -- we've built those relationships. We're going to be there a long time. Our neighbors are going to be there a long time. I actually also called the Department of Demographics to find out what the situation was with the incoming fifth grader and sibling situation. And for our three APUs that are moving to Grafton Village, there's only -- depends on who you talk to and which paperwork you look at. Between 27 and 32 kids that are moving from Staffordale down to Grafton Village, of those 32, four are incoming fourth graders, or, sorry, incoming fifth graders or current fourth graders. And of those four, all of them are on my street, and two of them have siblings. So, that's the other issue that we're having right now, is having to split the families, or at least the potential of that happening, and making the family choose a really hard decision between those two aspects. The potential between one and another is at least a 17-minute drive, and that's assuming traffic is amazing at 1:00 in the morning. So, to think about trying to do that is a very, very hard choice for us. It's also a hard choice to make our fifth -- incoming fifth grader decide, okay, you're going to go to your last school at a different place that your two sisters didn't graduate from, and -- or that your two sisters did graduate from. You don't get to go do that option. You could decide to junk everything we've done so far, as far as redistricting is concerned, and start fresh. Sure, you're not going to do that, but you can choose tonight to make Aberley Apartments out and leave us in as part of that decision. And I thank you very much for your time and support. Thank you.
I hope all is well. My name is Reverend Joshua Cole. I serve as the president for Stafford County's NAACP. I live at 1138 James Madison Circle in the Falmouth District. We are coming today as support for Plan E2. We had our education committee meet together. It was roughly 10 parents within the Stafford County community, and they also heard concerns from other parents in the community. This plan, we specifically chose to state our support for it because it has less racial and economic disparities and moves almost less than 700 students. And so, because of that, we felt that this was the best option that we could support. And looking here tonight, every person of color in the room, I see is a member of our organization, which means that those who would have a voice or were not heard are not here tonight. So, we have to stand in their place to be the best voice of reason for them. We cannot speak for everybody. We cannot do that, but we believe that our organization provides the best voice for those of people of color in the African-American community, the Latinx community, and what have you in Stafford County. So, our voice is simple. We stand for Plan E2. And I personally want to thank you for your time during this tedious process. I know it took a lot out of you, and this is not a simple process. So, we express our gratitude and thanks, and we hope that you will make the best plan for our students in Stafford County. Thank you so much.
Excuse me, sorry. Hello, my guy, Acquah Harbor. And I wasn't going to speak today, but then someone mentioned something to me that I just wanted to bring to your attention for in the future, because this is going to happen again, different levels, and it's just, it's a part of living in Stafford County. We are not done growing. The PTO at Moncur, who I used to be a part of, I'm not now, is, I think, like, 90% Acquah Harbor residents. Those awesome moms raised $30,000 for that track. Maybe if we know redistricting is going to happen, maybe we think, or at least we give something for that. Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, asking a community, a group of moms that all live in one community, to give their money. It's hard getting parents to give money. I am a stingy, stingy woman. I have five children, and I don't work. But I give my money to the PTOs. So, if I give my money to the PTOs for a future school that I believe my child's going to be at, and then you want to pull my child from that school, it makes me enraged. Now, I'm not enraged with you guys, and I support whatever decision, but E2 is the best. But I'm still going to respect you, and I'm always going to respect you. But I'm just saying, in the future, if you know something like that is coming down the pike, I don't know what you guys can do. Talk to the principals or talk to the PTOs, because we just felt like the rug is being pulled from under us. $30,000 is a lot of money. That's more money than I've made in the past 10 years. And for parents, Acquah Harbor is a working community. It's not rich. And I'm not saying that the newer communities are, but our homes, some of our homes in there cost, you know, under $100,000. We're not rich people. To give that amount of money for a part of a school that our children may never step in, I'm telling you, it's just something about that isn't right. We have to have some type of human element. And I don't know what you guys can do, but that's why y'all make the decisions, and I give you the complaints. So, thank you so much. I appreciate you guys.
Anyone else who wishes to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period and come to board reports. Are there any board committee reports? Dr. Chase?
So, the Commonwealth Governor's School Governing Board met on March 21st. We approved some minor changes to the bylaws. The director, Ms. Grigsby, shared with us that she's added a community service component to the program. Each high school is doing a service project this year. Stafford High School will be conducting a Heart Healthy Wellness Day this Saturday from 10 to 2 at Dixon Smith. North Stafford High is having a luggage drive to collect luggage for homeless families who need luggage for carrying their belongings. And the Colonial Forge Service Project is TBD, to be determined. We heard about applications to the Governor's School. Spotsylvania had 178 applications for 60 spots. That's about three applicants for each seat. In Stafford, we had 188 applications for 90 spots. That's about two applicants for each spot. Administrators in Spotsylvania were very complimentary about all of the outreach that the new director has done to increase interest in the program. However, it was noted that when the director visited middle schools in Stafford, she had asked to talk about the program to all the eighth-grade students enrolled in Algebra I or Geometry. Unfortunately, she only had students attend who were already interested in the Commonwealth Governor's School. So, this gets to the heart of the issue we, as a board, are wrestling with, which is how to provide equitable access to advanced programs. If the only students who are being told about CGS, IB, AP are students whose parents have instructed them to look out for information, we're going to miss qualified students. And then, Ms. Grigsby said she's hoping to visit fifth graders at the 17 elementary schools next year to make them aware of CGS as well. And that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Are there any other committee reports? No? All right. Dr. Kizner, superintendent comments.
All right, thank you. Just so you know, that we had a meeting with the elementary principals on March 20th to begin the discussion on the implementation of the redistricting plan. And just so you know, some of the topics we discussed was working on a schedule for student and family transitions, which would include, besides open houses, Barry Sutter was there, arranged transportation during the day where children could visit their new schools and get acclimated to the environment. We spoke about, this was discussed at one of your work sessions, about making sure when we talk about transferring staff, we try to match staff to the needs of our students, that that's a criteria that has to be looked at. We talked about logistics. We had a lot of supervisors there. We talked about technology. We talked about the registration policy. We talked, I think it's, in early April, we're going to have a transfer fair that now will include the redistricting for elementary, so at HR there. We talked about transportation. We talked about working on a process to help teachers and others move their belongings and furniture and things of that nature. Carrie Neely, our chief elementary officer? What's that? CEO? You're the CEO. Okay. She will be our lead person for the elementary redistricting coordination. Yesterday afternoon, yesterday evening, I applaud our middle school administration and our middle school teachers and central office staff. We had our first of three evening programs where our staff were learning about the response to intervention model, and it was great to see all eight middle schools represented, and we saw a lot of teachers and administrators working together. So, I applaud them. The parent and staff advisory committees have still going on. We meet monthly, very strong. Last week, we had the parent advisory. I try to keep it to an hour. I think some of them are learning I like to talk, and they like to talk, so they last a little bit over two hours. But I've concluded they want to get home after their kids go to bed, so I understand that. The parent -- some of them are there. They know I'm right. And the staff advisory meeting a couple weeks ago was really terrific. It was, we got into a passionate discussion about equity, like we did at the parent advisory. The meeting had to end because you guys were having a work session. And I invited, I sent out an email to all the, there's over 60 members on the staff advisory committee, two from per school, and I invited them, if they would like to have lunch or breakfast for me, continue one-on-one, thinking maybe three or four would take me off. So, I'm planning 21 lunches and breakfasts. So, I've had my first three this week. And then, finally, I'm going to send you the invitation. The date is slipping me right now. I think it's the first Tuesday in April, but I will get you. Our district leadership team model has really been good this year. I think I gave you the book, The End of Average. It's been facilitated by teachers and administrators each chapter, and the last meeting is in April, and that will be a reflection on the work that we've done since September. So, I will invite you to participate. And anyway, things are going really well. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion to approve consent?
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Egan, second by Mr. McCosker. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. All right. One action item this evening. 9.01, selection of an elementary redistricting plan to take effect for the 2019-2020 school year and approval for grandfathering of rising fifth graders. Do we have a motion?
I move to motion that we vote on redistricting Plan E2-1.
Do we have a second? All right. All right, we have a motion on the floor. Now, we can have discussion. Ms. Hazard, did you have any?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, substitute motion, to approve Plan E2-2.
Second. All right, we have a substitute motion and a second. We need to have a approval of this, that substitute motion. Correct, Mr. Nelson? All right, so.
You seconded, correct.
All in favor of the motion to consider, to approve E2-2, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
No.
No. Madam Clerk?
Dr. Chase?
No.
Ms. Decatur?
Aye.
Ms. Egan?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
Aye.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Mr. McCosker?
No.
Ms. Young?
No.
Madam Chair, motion fails three to four.
All right. So, that brings us back to the original motion for discussion and a vote.
Start discussion? Can we start discussion?
Do we not have discussion on the?
Well, this is a procedural matter, and Mr. Nelson, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the rules call for a vote on the substitute motion. We were not voting for or against the substance of the motion.
So, we're denying the substitute motion.
We're just voting against having that be the motion that we are voting on. So, that takes us back to the original motion. If that motion should fail, then we would have another motion being made. So, it wasn't no to the substance of the substitute.
I understand. Thank you.
Ms. Hazard, do you have a question?
Hmm, we did it differently before, but I will, when we did the high school redistricting, that's fine. We just did it differently.
Mr. Nelson, could you approach, please? I just, I want to make sure we're doing this properly, but that's my understanding of the Roberts' rules.
That's fine. I mean.
But, believe me, we have a parliamentarian, so we'll just get it clear for the record.
That's fine.
It doesn't mean we can't discuss the other plan. It's the motion that is being voted on. Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
You brought your book.
I did. Mrs. Healy's correct. I looked at the possibility this afternoon in Roberts' rules, as well as some other supplementary interpretations of Roberts' rules.
Interesting.
What Mrs. Healy is suggesting is, I believe, consistent with Roberts' rules.
Okay.
Interesting. It was done differently before, but thank you.
All right. So, that we can have any discussion at this point, but at the end of that discussion, we will be voting on the motion to approve. we will be voting on the motion to approve E2-1. Thank you, Mr. Nelson. All right, discussion. Do we want to just start and have...
Sure, I'll start.
Miss Egan, you want to start?
Well, yeah. I don't, I'm not quite sure how the four of you can actually not vote to keep at least almost 700 kids stationary, so that they're not impacted. We made a promise to Hampton Oaks five years ago to keep them together, and Plan E2-2 would have done that. So, I can't support E2-1 for mainly that reason, but, you know, almost 700 kids? I'm actually shocked.
So, I went back to what we as a board stated as our goal at the beginning of this process, which was to try to reduce bias from the process. We've had redistrictings in the past, before I joined this board, where the public has felt that certain communities have had undue influence over the redistricting process. With this in mind, we hired an independent consultant, Arc Bridge, to help us. After receiving two plans, we realized that we needed to provide the consultants with more direction, which we did. They then returned with three new plans. The board agreed to continue with Plans C and E, allowing board members to request tweaks to the two plans. I've been a little confused, but I went and looked up the definition of tweak. It is to make a small adjustment or to pinch. With that in mind, when we had these two plans, I looked at the percentage of students each board member's tweaks moved from what the independent consultant proposed. In Plan E2-1, Mr. McCosker, Ms. Egan, and I requested that fewer than 1% of elementary school students be allowed to stay at their current school. The remaining four board members moved somewhere between 1.5 and 3%. In Plan E2-2, it was the same, except that Ms. Decatur requested changing the consultant's proposed location for 9% of the county's elementary school students, 1,105. A single board member altering the independent consultant's plan by 9% doesn't fit with my definition of tweak. It also moves, it also moves an APU which is less than a mile from the new Moncur to a school that is on the opposite side of 610. So, Arc Bridge, the independent consultants, did not present us with a single plan that had all of Acquah Harbor attending the new Moncur, because they could not do so and meet all the criteria they were given by the board. And that's the issue for me.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Ms. Hazard?
Sure. All right. It's kind of weird to start with the whole process, but I'll, no, sorry, this keeps going up. I need Dr. Kizner to keep my microphone on. I believe that E2-2 is a fairly balanced plan that recognizes the importance of community support for our schools. I believe the plan recognizes the favorable impact of neighborhoods, of neighborhood-supported schools and highly-involved communities in our schools. And it eliminates certain anomalies in our current elementary configuration. I will say, there are positive aspects to both plans, the things that have stayed the same. I'm pleased that both plans address the long bus rides for England Run students who currently attend Margaret Brent and Ferry Farm by moving those students to either Falmouth, Rocky Run, or Hartwood. The feeder patterns in this area and the Hartwood District to middle school and high school have been improved as well under both plans. What is apparent under either plan is that when determining where to build the next elementary schools, a school on the east side of 95 is needed to minimize this crossing of 95 and Route 1 under any circumstance in the north and the south. Moreover, the growth projections in the Hartwood Elementary School attendance zone demonstrate that more capacity in the southwest Hartwood area is going to be needed. I think we need to, as a board, take what we've learned from this redistricting process of where we need to have schools and what we need next, and start creating that dialogue with the board supervisors and our citizens. Better-placed schools will also help with bus transport times, which we have heard time and time again. Projected growth is of concern under either plan. With regard to the, why E2-2 for me as my preference? I believe that the opening of Moncur, under E2-2, no elementary schools, at least initially, begin as Tier 2 class-size reduction schools. No school has over 45% free lunch, although I will note, one is very close. As this percentage in our community continues to increase, the school system must provide adequate resources. I believe that a more balanced approach among schools is preferable, instead of concentrating high percentages in only a couple of schools. I hope that the school system can learn from Dr. Kizner and his experience in this area as we address the changing needs of our students and families. I believe this is an area we will need to be addressing, and I believe if we can do it on a gradual approach, that is preferable from a staffing standard. I also support uprooting less students and recognizing the positive impact of highly-involved communities in our schools. There are many needs that the school budget cannot and will not ever, ever cover. I know that as a PTO president, I know that as we sit up here. Our PTOs and communities fill that gap. I agree with Ms. Healy's statement that the board's job was to apply common sense and the history and layout road system of our community to this massive undertaking to move kids among our elementary schools. I believe that the board will enhance the opening and operations of Moncur by keeping this Acquah Harbor community at Moncur Elementary School. And I believe that we need to recognize the investment that our school families have made. I do understand that we have great communities and great parents, and no matter what school that we go to, we need to be that same investment. But under this particular plan, at this particular time, when being given a choice of whether to move the kids or not and to create a Tier 2 school, if I had, my preference would be to E2-2.
Thank you. Ms. Decatur?
Dr. Chase, you're absolutely correct. You're very right. And I'm actually going to tell you a few reasons why that occurred, and I'm only telling you that because I don't want to waste anyone's time. I'm telling you that in hopes that it'll change your mind, all of you. I'm supporting Plan E2-2 tonight for so many reasons, and I knew I would the instant I saw the results of my very first request, which was only one. Please keep Brentsmill, a neighborhood that can walk to Wide Water Elementary School, in Wide Water Elementary School. I wanted to thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity to utilize my knowledge of my district to request the changes I made in my district that Arc Bridge could not accomplish, by no fault of their own, but rather because of flawed redistricting criteria and subpar data. As I have mentioned on several occasions, every single plan generated, options A, B, C, D, and E, gave Wide Water Elementary School one proposed option to relieve their overcrowding. That option was to move APU 309.1 Brentsmill, which is within walking distance to Wide Water Elementary School, out of Wide Water and into Moncur. Because our district is on the far north end of the county, and much of it is essentially a peninsula, there aren't many options for APU's to move out of Wide Water to provide relief. I wanted to understand why Wide Water continuously was given one option, so I began researching the APU's and making some adjustments myself. I found that there was essentially one other options for APU's to move out of Wide Water, and the reason it wasn't considered is because it creates an island, according to our pretty-colored maps, and, more importantly, put Moncur over the board's previously-established free-lunch rate, which, when we began this process, was stated that no school would be above the current highest free-lunch rate. That move did not accomplish any of those criteria, however, can be seen in Plan E1-1. Which brings me to my next point. We must fix our APU's. In all of the original plans, and this is very important for you guys to understand, because if you don't understand my area, you won't get it. In all of the original plans, the only reason that APU 309.1 was able to attend Moncur while still remaining contiguous on the map is because that APU runs from directly next to Wide Water Elementary School, all the way down Telegraph Road, turns left on Route 1, and continues to a mile to its ending point at Route 610 Garrisonville Road. It incorporates all corporate retail along Route 1. Meanwhile, over here, APU 243 encompasses the new Moncur Elementary School, Perry Farm subdivision behind Dockstone, runs over to incorporate the entire Stafford marketplace. Because the Brentsmill APU and the Moncur APU connect at the corner of Route 1 and 610 by way of gas stations, car dealerships, and Target, this was considered to be a contiguous move. I disagree. Please excuse me for presenting supporting material, but I thought this would happen. So, I just want to show you that Jackson and I did some coloring the other day. And Plan E2-2 would look much different on a map if the corporate and retail spaces didn't create the appearance of islands, simply because they must be attached to a singular stationary APU containing a minimum of 40 homes. To me, that makes no good sense, and it makes us make decisions that are flawed. That's what the map E2-2 would look like if you can connect the corporate retail space that I'm talking about. I support Plan E2-2 because it closes a significant economic and racial gap between two schools that are 2.6 miles away from each other. Because it moves the once-segregated island of Foxwood Drive back to Moncur, where they belong. It moves Woodstring Boulevard from Park Ridge back to Hampton Oaks, where many are eager to return to. And Plan E2-2 accomplishes all this while still moving 676 less children. That's 676 less kids ages 5 to 10 years old that will have to be disrupted because of the county's lack of planning. The final item I want to show you is this chart, which illustrates the number of affected students per school, based on the original Plan E, which is different by two, maybe a couple more students in the northern region than Plan E2-1. Barrett moved 44 students out. Brent, 47 students. Burns moved 32 students out. Wide Water moved 79 students out. Garrisonville, zero. Moncur, 650. Hampton Oaks, 462. That's why the percentage of students I had to request to move was so much higher than everyone else's. Why are we doing this to the schools? Oh, and I, obviously, I didn't include a few schools. I didn't include Winding Creek. Their number was slightly higher, but it's not anymore because we kept a lot of students in Winding Creek, as well as Falmouth, whose number was slightly higher, but we moved Clearview back into Falmouth. So, I don't know what the actual numbers are of students moved out anymore. So, why are we doing this to the schools that were not overcrowded to begin with and create a larger disparity than we started with? We do have a choice.
Young?
Sure, thank you, Chairman Healy. We just talked about moving and diversity and disparity, but yet, we moved 235 students from Rocky Run, from the Old Forge area, from Rocky Run to Conway. I did not concentrate on that area, but I do know that Vice Chair Chase was trying to keep Old Forge at Rocky Run. I visited that area, tried to get people to come to the public hearings to, you know, to voice their opinion about not wanting to move. They didn't. So, we did move 235 students from disadvantaged area to another school. Did they have to? I don't know the details there. I wrote mine so that I will not leave anything out. We are a growing county with limited funding. Let's embrace our growth. But unfortunately, developers and real estate agents feed a false narrative to new families when selling homes. They cannot guarantee which school the new homeowner's childrens attend. The school system and the board is in the business of seating the children and ensuring that every child gets an excellent education. Prior to me joining the board, I know Dr. Benson, the previous superintendent, and Mr. Foley, the administrator for the county, decided that the school capacity would be at 100%. That was amicable to them. I tend to disagree, and would like it to be decreased to 90%, which was one of the redistricting criteria. I ask that the Joint CIP Committee takes this up and that the Chair and Vice Chair in their next one-on-one ensure that the program capacity is captured at 90%, not 100. This way, we can place the elementary school back on the CIP list where it belongs. Planning Commission staff and capital improvement plan work with developers and proffers and bring recommendations for approval or denial to the board of supervisors. The proffers pay for a level of security. I will go on the record and say that there are school sites have been proffered in Embry-Mell for high school, for our middle school and elementary school on Mine Road. The growth is clearly in the south, Garrisonville area. I believe in the future that the school board should be involved in the final selection of the top two or three consultants in the redistricting vetting process. This did not happen. Although I like our consulting, and we, you know, we voted to have a consultant because of the previous redistricting process, the public asks for trust and transparency and no influence of interest groups. I want to ensure that I abide by that. No neighborhood is guaranteed to go to their neighborhood school. We are a growing county, I repeat. It will be harder and harder to fulfill this criteria, especially trying to keep large neighborhoods together. It's not feasible. That brings us to today. We went through several plans, including C, Hybrid C, and D, which had Embry-Mell partial or full going to Winding Creek. I did not have the vote to bring either one of those plans forward, even though I wanted to. We were left with E plans. In One, Autumn Ridge was in Winding Creek, and Hampton Oaks neighborhood was together but split in all three plans. All my plans had them split also. Settlers Landing was in Park Ridge. Anthony Burns had a few more students to accommodate Brook Road, and I worked with Ms. Egan on that. And so now, you know, they're staying at Stafford Elementary School. And Hills of Acquah and Woodstream gets to stay in their neighborhood school of Moncur. Our schools will continue to increase in diversity, and therefore, in culture. This is where these parents of these students choose to live in Garrisonville. This is their school. Period. Full stop. Let's ensure the resources are there to support the students towards reaching excellence in education. I stated this before, and I will say it again. Balancing diversity does not bring diversity in culture, color, or race to the school by moving students from one school to another. The other criteria that the board set forth, such as transportation, feeder patterns, capacity, underutilization, and balancing enrollment, were taken into account. Diversity and culture is built upon by ensuring that more teachers look like the community it serves, and that the school system serves and provides the resources needed for a quality education for these students. Thank you.
Well, for once, I don't have a lot to say, other than it's been a long, grueling process for all of us, for the community, for everyone. I recall the redistricting back for the 2015 year, when Wide Water and Moncur were overcrowded. We had to move people out. At that point, Woodstream was moved up to Park Ridge. It wasn't the first closest, it wasn't the second closest, but it was the school that had capacity. The intention at the time was that was going to be a temporary move. Woodstream is very close to the new Moncur. It's smack in the middle of all the other communities that are assigned there under E2-2. And I think you'll remember, Ms. Decatur, when E2-2 first came up, I said, is there a way to put Woodstream, you know, into Moncur? And I respect the answer was no because of the numbers. They just didn't work. There's a significant number of children in that community. And I believe that community should go to Moncur. It is their school closest. They're surrounded by other neighborhoods that are in Moncur. That is, to me, the island that we are talking about not wanting to create. And in E2-1, Woodstream is included in Moncur. Certainly, you know, either school would be an improvement over, you know, having to go all the way up to Park Ridge, although I'm sure they've, you know, they've done well there, but it's been more years than we had initially planned, because we all thought Moncur would be built before this date. So, I'm going to be supporting E2-1. Is there anyone else who would like to make any further remarks? Ms. Decatur?
Yeah, I just want to let the board know that the top...
Yeah, I just want to let the board know that the top of Woodstream Boulevard is two miles to the new Moncur. You have to turn right, make a left, go on the roundabout into the end of the road where the new Moncur will be. The top of Woodstream Boulevard to Hampton Oaks is 2.4 miles. You make a left, go across at the light, straight to left on Hampton Oaks. So, that's all.
I have one comment.
Hasard?
I was wondering if then the motion maker would consider adding to that, I think we have to add the fifth graders to the motion.
Of the grandfathering?
Of the grandfathering to the motion. I think that was part of the, um, so I just want to make sure that that's done. I would also ask if we would consider adding to that, or if, uh, a commitment, and I know we can't bind our board, of the school board, to examine whether Moncur and any other schools, as determined by the superintendent, should receive additional staff or resources as part of the school board budget process, because I think that's vitally important under E two-one. I, I believe it's more balanced in E two-two, you all know that. But I do not, I believe that if this board passes something like this and does not commit to at least examine, I know we cannot fund, but to ask the superintendent to help us in that area, because I, I will be voting no, but if I, it may, I don't know. I just think that's something we have to examine. So my amendments to, my suggested amendments to the motion would be that we will be grandfathering rising fifth grade students to the extent, but there, there has to be, they have to provide their own transportation to the base school that they are currently attending. And I would ask that we request that the superintendent, let me say, a commitment by the school board to examine whether Moncur and any other schools, as determined by the superintendent, because I, should receive additional staff or resources as part of the school board budget process.
Yeah, I, I have a question, Ms. Hazard. If we put that on the agenda for the next meeting, that second part, would that address your, your, your issue? Because I'm not sure in terms of, you know, a direction or a motion. Certainly, it's something we talked about at the work session, not, not just, you know, in the north, but also, I think Conway was one of the areas that we wanted to, to look at, if there were any additional resource needed.
I think passage of E two-one requires us, but that is only one board member. I would love to see that the rest of the board believes that under, what we are creating under E two-one may require additional resources, and it's going to have to be a priority. If you want to put it on that, I just feel that I had to state for the record that that would be, I think, a way to improve, but.
I mean, we could.
But the grandfathering, I'm sure, is needed.
Yes.
So I guess my concern, I mean, I, I absolutely agree that we need that, but I think it should be a separate vote, so that everybody can, can commit by voting yes to that, rather than just people who are voting for E two-one.
Yeah, I agree. I, that's something that we talked about, when, when these schools do change in their percentages across the board because of redistricting, and you have the two-year money given for CSR and all that, so let's just say, you know, School X has two-year money, has the extra assets, and then all of a sudden, the redistricting come next year, there's, uh, it's dramatically reduced, but another school has increased. We do, you know, I would not want, I would not feel right about that, original school not keeping those assets when another school needs it. So I think it does need to come back, and the staff needed to do some work and bring it back to us.
So we could, we could put that on the agenda at, at the next meeting. I'd suggest we put it on for information. The superintendent can bring us information. If we want to move it to action that night, we can, or we could put it for action at the meeting after that. But the grandfathering of the rising fifth graders, we had discussed making that, you know, part of the motion. Is that something that the motion maker would entertain?
Sure, yeah.
All right.
Transfer fifth graders.
And that was, that rising fifth graders would be permitted to stay at their current school, provided they, family or guardians provide transportation. Now, we need to be clear, this does not include siblings, correct?
Correct.
Does not include siblings, it's only the rising fifth graders. Okay? All right, uh, who, who made the second?
I think I did.
Was that you, Dr. Chase? Would that be acceptable to you?
Yes.
All right, so the motion now is for approval of Plan E two-one, and permitting the grandfathering of rising fifth graders to stay at their currently assigned school, provided that they, they provide transportation by their parents or guardians. All right, so that is the motion we're going to be voting on. Any further discussion before we take the vote? No? All right, all in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No?
No.
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
No.
Ms. Egan?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Madam Chair, motion passes four to three.
All right, that brings us to information items. 10.01, award of a construction contract to Bran Air Inc. of Manassas, Virginia, using a Virginia Public School Authority funds in the amount of $2,689,000 for the replaced mechanical system Rock Hill Elementary School project. Any questions on this item? Any questions?
Yeah, no.
No?
You know, this is, this is something that, um, the, um, this is something that's been on the, this is something, is this Rock Hill? Right, we're talking about the Rock Hill? Yeah, this is something that's been on the board docket for a long time. I think, you know, we need to get, we need to get moving with this, and I totally, I'm, I'm totally supportive. And this is where I want to see us other schools not calling them renovations, because renovation, that has a bad, that has a bad connotation, where they think it's this massive project. But there's a lot of schools that need work in certain areas. Maybe it's all the boilers and air conditioning units and mechanical ID, uh, stuff put together, just like Rock Hill and this one. And other schools have other upgrades that are needed, so, um, you know, this is something that I think we'd have to support and drive on with, so that's just my.
Dr. Chase?
No comment.
Do you want to?
This item is asked to move to action.
This item is respectfully asked to move to motion today, because they were not able to get bids out until March 15th, which was after our last board meeting.
Madam Chair?
I, I move that we, that we move it to action.
Do we have a second?
Second. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, um, any discussion?
Madam Chair, I'd just like to say that I've read all of the information items. I have no questions or concerns, and I'm going home to be with my son.
All right. No discussion? All right, all in favor of the motion to move this to action? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, um, Madam Clerk, I'm not sure if Ms. Egan is coming back.
But we have a quorum. We're good.
She did. All right, well, you let the record reflect that she has left us. But we still have a quorum, so we will continue with the agenda. Do we have a motion for approval of this item?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Young. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 10.02, awarded various furniture equipment supply and installation delivery orders in the aggregate amount of $763,694.72, using Virginia Public School Authority funds for the purchase of classroom cafeteria and office furniture and classroom technology in support of the rebuild Moncur Elementary School project. Any questions about this item? No? If you, any come up between now and the next meeting, please send them to Dr. Kizner, and he'll get us the answers to everyone. 10.03, approve, approval of a permanent storm drainage traffic control and utility easement, as well as a temporary construction easement in support of the county's and Virginia Department of Transportation's Route One and Courthouse Road intersection improvement project. Any questions about this item? No? Dr. Kizner, on this item, I saw the plat, but I didn't see the deed, so if we can see that deed before the next meeting.
We saw that was missing, too.
I, I don't know if you all don't want me to see it early? You know, I don't have as much time.
That's a, that's a Trish Holly thing, so.
When I'm sitting here doing this, but.
Make sure you show Tristan Holly.
Yeah, so we, we would like to see that deed, please. I mean, the plat's fine, but the conveyance is by the deed.
That's what I'll be signing.
10.04, review of policy 2103, student transfers. We had a work session prior to the meeting this evening. Dr. Chase is going to give us a brief summary of the discussion. This will be on the agenda at the next meeting for information as well, and I'll, I will suggest, since we have two of our members absent, that we not have any further discussion on this matter this evening.
I have a comment right behind that. Just to say, I believe that it was asked during the work session of the information that I had pulled from.
Yeah, to share.
Loudoun County. If you all don't click to apply, but I just, I did pull it from the, um, from their website of the process on the website, but then I pulled the two policies. If you all would like, I would provide that to, um, our clerk, and then she can at least provide the copy.
Why don't you get it to Dr. Kizner? Because he's going to be putting together all this information for us, and.
It has been given to Dr. Kizner.
He'll give it to the clerk. Thank you very much. All right, Dr. Chase, this is just a summary of our discussion. We had no decisions.
I don't know if it's something, this is shock, so I can't get back on.
At this point, it's simply discussion, which we'll have again at the next meeting, and if we take action, it will be on the second meeting in April. Thank you.
Yep. So we simply discussed the current transfer policy. There's concern among members of the board that with a redistricting of this magnitude, that we may find that it gets undone by lots and lots of additional transfer policies. So we wanted to review the policy, talk to staff about how they currently carry the policy out. There's some question about what level should a school be closed, and so there was discussion about whether it should be at 85 percent capacity or 80 percent. It was also noted that it isn't just the aggregate capacity that makes a difference in allowing transfers, that it may be more important how many students at a particular grade level, and so adding one or two students to a particular grade level might require the school to add a teacher. So staff is going to look over current procedure and bring us some recommendations for possible changes to the transfer policy.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Ms. Young, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I ju, I just have a comment in reference to the redistricting from the group from Embry Mill, and Dr. Kizner and I, we talked about the transportation pilot program, and we were going to look into that to change the time back to accommodate Embry Mill. And I, Dr. Kizner, I don't know if you wanted to add any value to that?
Yes, so I wanted to just make sure that, you know, we don't rush into a decision, and I've asked Carrie to organize a meeting with the two principals and transportation and talk out, and, which we should do, because it was a pilot, to review, and then hopefully by the ninth, I'll have a recommendation to the school board.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Kizner.
And I would like to also go to the schools. I, I think it's important that we hear from, you know, both schools and, and the community.
Yeah, that's what we're doing.
Certainly, we heard from one tonight.
Yeah, no, I've been hearing from them in email, and I did visit the school, I did talk to Dr. Kizner, Dr. Kizner talked to Barry, and we, we, we're talking. So we'll continue to talk to make sure we do the right thing.
But, but my point is that we want to hear from both communities.
Yeah, that's what Dr. Kizner said. He's going to talk to Winding Creek principals in time, and also.
He's going to talk to the principals, and he's going to talk to transportation.
Transportation.
But I think we need to hear from, you know, the, the PTOs, from, from the parents.
My expectation, when I say the word, yeah, when I, when I share that they talk to the principal, that the principal is gathering feedback from other stakeholders, but, I'll turn on the mic again. When I mention the term principal, my expectation is that they reach out to the PTO staff, that it's not just three people's opinion, that they've gathered, I did bring it up last, parent advisory, obviously, only the parents from those two schools spoke, so I have a small sampling of parents, but we will collect more information and give you a recommendation.
Chairman Healy, can, oh, sorry, you go ahead.
Ms. Hazard?
In that same vein, most of you know double bus runs are a big deal to me, because it very much impacts a lot of my schools. I would really like to, as, since we now have an approved plan, as we move forward in the broader discussion, to find out, my hope that we are keeping kids closer, that there will be less double bus runs, but I think we, as a board, need to really know, are we adding more bus run? How did, how did it impact us? Most of you know, in the budget, I really think we need more in transportation, but that's not the only reason. I think we, as a board, need to be informed. How many double bus runs do we have? When are they really getting home? And what can we do about it? So at some point after, and I'm, I'm not trying to burden Barry with that, but I do think we need to know from this plan, are we having more bus runs, double bus runs? I know there was a plan at one point, we were trying to minimize them. Just, I think I would like to have that information before we go into the summer, to see if there's something we can do in general for all.
Thank you. The next regular school board meeting is April 9th at 7:00 PM. There is a Finance and Budget Committee meeting on April 2nd at 6:00 PM, and a Student Discipline Committee on April 4th at 4:00 PM. That is not open to the public, the other ones are. Thank you, we are now adjourned.